It's kind of.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. That was.
Was your.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
No comments are.
Yeah. Yeah.
They could be. I don't.
Yeah, it is. It's not. Realize. That. Oh, no. He's not. Yes. What?
It's what I. Running. Maybe next.
Yeah.
Have a next.
Would like to welcome everyone and call to order the study meeting of the West Valley City Council. It is November twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, beginning our meeting at four thirty two P M in the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. All members of the council are present. Councilman Hune, Councilman Norfeld, Councilman Fitziamanu, Councilman Whitstone, Councilman Harmon, Councilman Christensen, myself. We're also joined at the table with our city manager, Mr. Peely and our city recorder, Ms. Kamic. Our minutes of November twelfth, twenty twenty four, I'll turn those to the council for discussion or motion.
I'd move to approve those minutes, ma'am.
Second.
Thank you. Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hey. We now have our introduction of new employees from October twenty twenty four. So we'd like to welcome you all, and we will each ask each of the department heads to come up to the podium and introduce. So we'll start with Captain Jacobs. I'm a chief, okay? What did I say? Captain Chief Jacobs. Sorry. Yes, yes, whatever you'd like.
I would like to introduce to you all Officer Joshua Larson. Uh, he's been with us for a minute. We sent him through post, so he's a new officer to law enforcement. And he, uh, he actually was sworn in in September, but he wasn't able to be with us at last month's meeting, so I have for you Officer Larson.
Welcome.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And then I have a second officer to introduce, but we'll be introducing him next month. He was in a little fender bender on his way here, so.
We'll give it the day off. Thank you. We'll now have, um, Dan Johnson come introduce his group.
I've got two employees to introduce, but this is only one of them. This is Jorge Alatorre. He's a, an operator one. We hired him. He was at the gas company. And he's had a lot of experience operating equipment and has a C D L, and we're really glad to have him on our crew. And, um, fun fact about Jorge is two weeks ago, he came, I hadn't met him yet, and he sat there for two hours during study meeting, um, because we got the dates wrong on him, so he's well acquainted with the council's work and had a lot of experience in watching you as a, as a body do your work, so. Um, and then our next employee is Nick Crossland, and he's a mechanic four that he, he, they're on their way over here, and we might just miss him, but he'll poke his head in a few minutes and wave maybe, but, uh, but Nick is a, is a very experienced mechanic that we, that we brought on that used to teach mechanics and has, has a lot of great experiences, so we're, we're definitely glad to add him to our fleet maintenance team.
Awesome. Welcome.
Thanks, Jorge.
Thank you. Thanks for being so patient last meeting. Yes. Okay, now we'll have Steve Pastrick coming in and introducing his employees.
Thanks, ma'am. I'd like to introduce Evelyn Rivera. She is our new building permits and inspections clerk in building inspections for our department. She actually is originally from El Salvador, but grew up in L A and, uh, has, uh, moved Utah, been here about six years, loves it here and, uh, grateful to have her. She, uh, has a lot of customer service experience and, uh, also speaks Spanish, which is really helpful at the counter with, uh, with our customers, so glad to have her.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Mr. Kirk Thomas.
Good evening. Uh, we are very excited and just pleased as could be to introduce you to Travis Iono. He is joining our neighborhood services team. He is a community event specialist. Uh, he comes to us with extensive knowledge of West Valley City. He's very proud of West Valley City. He does have tattoos of West Valley City, so.
Awesome.
Very cool. Uh, he comes with a, a, a great extensive background in marketing and communications. He's extensively involved within the community as well. Um, so we're just couldn't be more excited to have Travis join the neighborhood services team.
Thank you. Yep, Travis has already been to a couple things, taking a lot of pictures, so great additions, all of them, so thank you. All right, we'll now go to the review of our regular meeting tonight, and we have a couple changes, so I'll ask Sam Johnson to go up and talk to us about the first one.
Hello, mayor and council. Um, tonight we're going to recognize, we, over the past month, about a month ago, we ran a contest for the residents of Design W V C, and we had people submit some different artwork on what they thought West Valley City, what meant something to them, and, and they submitted different artwork. After looking over it, we had some great, um, entries that were a lot of fun to see and, and to see how people were thinking things through and why they chose the design they did. And actually, Travis, could we pull it up? Um, we have a winner. Um, his name's Jackson Best. If you all know Jackson, he is the, um, he's a resident and Hunter High School student body president and also a youth city council member. And this was his design with a beautiful write-up on why he chose that design, everything from that the lines indicate, he put the lines in a bunch of different lines because it shows the individuals of West Valley City, that if you take out a line, the artwork is not quite the same. And if you take an individual out of West Valley City, uh, it changes the city just a little bit and talks about the beauty of the mountains as part of the design. The W V, um, diamond that's also in our logo and the water tower that shows the industrialness of our residents and all that, so we're excited that, that he won, and he'll be there at council meeting today to be recognized for that design.
Okay. Thank you. And then Paula Belgar, I'll never say it correctly.
You can say however you want. I'll answer. Good evening. So, uh, less two, couple of weeks ago, I was here to present to you about the, some changes to our P T O policy. And we have just a small little tweak. We would like to add the following paragraphs or points to our policy that employees that are retiring from the city will be cashed out at a hundred percent on whatever P T O they have accrued at the time, no limit, but only for employees retiring in good standing with the city, so. And that's the only change we have.
Okay.
Any questions?
For the council for questions? Nope. Okay, thank you. All right. Um, Craig Stig? Yes. Okay, we'll now go to our award ceremonies and proclamations, and we have an essential piece award recognition. Turn the time to Mr. Thomas.
Hi again. Um, so if you recall, about a year ago, we brought forward, um, the idea of re, um, reimagining and bringing back the essential piece awards. The idea behind the essential piece awards were that we would recognize outstanding, um, service and community participation of residents in West Valley City. Uh, we would do this on a monthly basis. Um, and on a monthly basis, we would acknowledge these residents or, or community partners on the social media platforms. On a quarterly basis, we recognize them in the neighborhood services newsletter. And then on an annual basis, we would bring them to city council to be recognized altogether as a group. So next meeting, um, in however many weeks that is. Um, we will be having, uh, the award recipients attend. Uh, we'll do some light refreshments for them out in the lobby area. Um, but they range from, anybody can participate, or anybody can be acknowledged and recognized as an essential piece of West Valley City, as long as they're contributing kind of above and beyond, um, doing spectacular things to, uh, celebrate the pride of our community. So we have teachers, we have residents, we have students, we have, um, volunteers, um, we have city employees, so, um, I think it's pretty well-rounded. It's been a really fun year for us. There is one outstanding um, acknowledgement for December because it's not December yet, so hopefully they'll be here. Um, so that is the essential piece of words.
Hey, thank you. Any questions for Craig? Nope. Okay. All right, we'll go to our public hearings for December tenth, and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Pastrick for application Z P G P Z by twenty twenty four.
Thank you, mayor. So this is an item that's, um, been before the council before, and we had uh, our last meeting, it was continued, and so there's, we have a new, uh, new proposal, uh, to present to council, and so Paul, if you're able to promote me, I can share my screen here. Thank you. So I want to start by showing, first of all, this is the, the concept that, uh, oh, I need to. Sorry, thanks for muting me there. I think I, I forgot to mute myself. So this is the concept uh, that the council considered at your last meeting, so there were a total of thirty nine lots here. The, um, if you look at the, in this concept, there were twelve of those lots that fronted, uh, six thousand west. And you had the, the road coming into the development aligned with Selma Drive. Um, the latest proposal has, uh, dropped, uh, one of the lots, so there's now thirty eight. Um, the, the lots that now front six thousand west are all, uh, eighty feet wide, so that's the, that's the typical lot width you'd have in an R one eight zone. And then, um, they've also made some of the lots, you can see here with the road shifting south to where they're, um, they're facing that new road, so they're essentially corner lots, or at least the ones here. So you essentially have, uh, the four, the four here that front six thousand and four here that front six thousand west, and then the rest of them would be accessing those internal streets. One of the, one of the, uh, comments that the applicant heard from residents that were at the meeting, uh, a few weeks ago was um, that they actually wanted to see this road offset from Selma Drive. And so that's why they had made, uh, this adjustment to move that, uh, move that south. And then also, again, uh, realigning some lots so that there, you don't have as many that are actually fronting uh, six thousand west, and so the, the, the development agreement in terms of changes includes the reduction uh, going from thirty nine to thirty eight lots, um, limiting the number of lots that would front six thousand to eight. Um, also saying that those lots that front six thousand would be at least eighty feet in width, so an eighty foot frontage. And then the amount of open space does drop somewhat, uh, in this latest concept from the previous concept, so now it's, uh, twenty six thousand square feet. Which, again, uh, because of this would be a P U D, they're, they are required to have some common open space in order to be considered a, a P U D. And, uh, just maybe one other point, I know, uh, Nicole sent out earlier today and, um, some information from the applicant that just, you know, elaborates on these points that I've mentioned, and I believe that's also in your packet as well.
Any questions for?
There are fine question about the future of six thousand. You mentioned there's that at, at one point it'll be not widen, but the, there will be a center lane. And so there won't be really opportunity to park on the street. So those cars, those eight homes will be backing into traffic into a lane. Is that right?
Could be, although, um, within eighty foot wide lot, we have seen some, and, and this is usually on streets that are even wider, but we've seen some that'll do a circular drive that just makes that easier to maneuver in and out of. But in, in this concept, the lots would be big enough to do that if someone chose to have a circular drive.
But will that be up to the homeowner to do, or will the developer do that?
Uh, right now it would be up to the, to the homeowners. We don't actually have a requirement that there be circular drives. We just, that it's something that's allowed in, in situations where you have, you know, busier streets. The trade-off, of course, is you end up having two curb cuts as opposed to one curb cut, so that's one of the trade-offs.
I do want to end up with Jeff with you one, once more time. Um, six thousand west right here, those lots facing that road is that, is that from six thousand to eight thousand square feet?
So there, um, those lots are eighty feet wide, some slightly more, but at least eighty, and then the depth is ninety, so they're in the, is that seventy two hundred square feet range?
Okay, how about the one, uh, those in the inside?
Yeah, so the inside, those, some of the internal lots are as, uh, in the, as small as like forty two hundred square feet. Um, and then you have, it, it's a blend, and so overall the, when I ran the numbers, it's, that it's between five and six thousand square feet is the, is the average between, if you look at all the lots combined.
So the lots that face north and south, as you enter the, the ones in the west area are a little bit bigger than the ones right on, well, maybe they're about the same. Never mind, they're about the same. Will they have enough space there to get a driveway?
Yeah.
Pull out safely?
Yeah, right. So all of, and typical what we do in those cases is the, and we, we do have requirements to, when you're, when you're on a corner, that the driveway is not on the, on the side closest to the street, so we end up having the driveway as far away from the, the corner as possible.
Okay. Could those people turn their house and have the front onto six thousand? If they wanted to?
Well, right now, the way the development agreement is worded, it is, says that you'd only have eight lots fronting six thousand, so by the agreement, I would say I mean, those lots that are facing north or south would have to face, their, their driveway would have to be on the side street, not on six thousand.
And, uh, one more question. Have you done, man?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. One more question. Uh, single hall and five feet big wing.
Two houses.
So I said back, because we were asking.
By the ten.
So it's the, um, the on, a, a, all, all of the homes on the side that's not the garage side will be, the minimum is five feet, okay? Um, on the garage side of the house, what the agreement says is at least seventy five percent of the, of the homes would have ten feet, so you could have room to like have a parking pad on that side, and then the remaining twenty five would be five feet. So the closest homes could be together would be ten feet, because each would have at least five.
Okay, seeing no other questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we now have, um, I'll turn the time over to Mr. Bunderson. Thank you. Changes to our fine arts. The performing arts center.
That's. There we go. Thank you, mayor and council. Sorry for the echoing. I, I, to me, this, um, this transaction I'm about to explain makes a lot more sense if I draw it out. So I am going to share my screen. Um, those to my and as the council knows from the past to my, uh, fine art. Okay, so we're actually discussing two s- sort of different. Small again. We're actually discussing two, um, different transactions that are part of the same thing. So, um, for the for the five oh one C three, which was the West Valley Arts Foundation, to receive the building and the grant money that we talked about earlier this year. Um, we have to do a couple different things. Um, but backing up a little, we can see that the building is valued at four million, five hundred sixty two thousand, six hundred forty six dollars. And then the amount of grant uh, is six hundred and forty thousand dollars, which will, would be distributed January first and April first. In order for a city to transfer money to a five oh one C three like the West Valley Arts Foundation, we have to hold what's called a ten eight two study and hearing. This is, uh, Utah code ten dash eight dash two, which requires, um, which requires that we do this study and that we hold a public hearing, um, to determine if the money that we're spending is the best use and beneficial to the city. Now, that doesn't have to be in straight economics terms, right? It doesn't have to be, well, we're going to earn this much money if we give this much money. It can be intangible such as art or drama or things like that, and so um, what we have put together in your pocket is the ten eight two study, and you can, you can read that, uh, this complies with all the legal, um, requirements under that statute, and so if the council does that ten eight two study and holds the hearing and finds that it is in the best interest of the city to transfer this, then there's a second, second legal document in that same item, which is the agreement between West Valley City and the, um, West Valley Arts Foundation. This agreement, um, goes over the grant again, the six, six hundred and forty thousand dollars, the distributions of that grant, the, uh, transfer of the deed to the West Valley Arts Foundation for one dollar, and then it goes through the restrictions that that deed will, um, will have on it, um, including that the West Valley Arts Foundation must continue to operate uh, as, as a, um, arts foundation and put on shows and, um, other conditions for that otherwise, and they can't sell the, uh, the building unless they offer it back to us for a dollar. Um, so that's the, that's the legal framework, uh, that we're studying here tonight. And the legal way to do that.
So questions from the council?
Let me turn this off because I'm still getting an echo.
Conducts the ten eight two study, that's an internal city driven study, not an external.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, a, anyone could do it. The, the statute doesn't require anyone in particular. We, we assigned, um, Brandon or Brendan Hill, uh, to conduct the study and write it up, but yeah, I need there's no requirement.
The question on I'm gonna make just a, I'm gonna go. So if they decide to test of the building, we, the city has the, the right to purchase it back for a dollar. But in the study, it mentioned that as long as it's continued to operate as a theater, so could they change organizations or, or somehow change, but continue to operate it as a theater and not be required to sell it back or?
No, because they'd have to have our, um, a- anything they do to the, to, to the ownership of the building, they have to have our permission. That's part of the.
West Valley Arts Foundation's operator.
Right.
As long as that continues to remain that way, trending as a theater, then.
That's right. That's right. And, and you'll see in the study that if, again, it doesn't have to be a pure economic analysis, but based on the cost that the theater was, um, based on what the theater was costing the city, um, if they operate as a theater until twenty twenty eight, that pencils out. You know, we were spending one point four million dollars a year. We're not spending that money anymore, so by the time you get to twenty twenty eight, um, it, it's reached zero. I know that actually wasn't the question you asked at all, sorry.
But it's a note. Keep talking.
But, but maybe, so council member, um, you did kind of answer the question within that, though, it's, I mean, it's a clear, so the agreements with the performance art, arts center, art theater. And and so because of that, there, we're only bound to that organization. The, the, the building, that organization, and so if they were to change it, or, um, like you said, and back out, um, that would no longer be a part of the agreement, so they would have to, they would have to come to us as, as, uh, Eric was saying. The other thing is, um, there are also provisions in there that allow them to go out and, and, um, sell to, but it has to remain a theater, but even at that point, council has to give approval to that. That's the protection that the city has, both in, in all those scenarios.
So if they want to sell it to someone else, we have first right to buy it back for a dollar.
Yeah, that's right.
And the odds of us not doing that would be pretty slim to none.
Yeah, and unless there's another, like the council feels that another group would, would carry out the, you know, the same goal of perpetuating the theater, an organization in the city, you know, but.
But I think we would take it back for a dollar and then negotiate with that other entity.
This allows us to do that.
Yeah. How about subleasing? Would they be allowed to sublease it to another group?
Again, not without our permission. They, they, a- a- anything they would do to include that title, uh, requires our, our permission.
Including borrowing money against the building, they cannot do without.
Yep.
Our permission.
That's right.
Any other questions for Mr. Bunderson? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So Eric, do you want to jump in real quick and introduce your new employee or have Dan do it? Dan kind of introduced. He doesn't like sitting. He likes walking around.
Are working on cars.
No, you're just fine.
Come on up, Nick. This is.
He is the best dressed mechanic I've ever seen.
He wasn't looking like he wasn't dressed like this when I saw him earlier today. So. He was deep into his work, but this is Nick Cross, Nick Crossland, and as I introduced him before, when. And when he was not here, I'm gonna say the nice stuff now. But uh, oh, he's an awesome mechanic. He's he's got a ton of experience and we're really glad to have him here. We've been looking for. Some experience um in our new hires in the mechanic side, and we're really grateful to have found Nick and. And so we look forward to many years of of his good work to keep our fleet. Uh, up up and running. And we really do appreciate the the mantra. They to these guys, the work comes first and. They were late because they were trying to get another car out the door. So anyway, thanks, Nick.
Thank you. Welcome to the city. We can sneak out the door if you want now. As interesting as we are. All right, now we'll turn the time over. Miss Jamie Young to go over the word of a contract for life of good investments. My golf course.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Jamie Young, Parks and Recreation Director. Uh, so what we have before you tonight is an agreement uh to uh replace two of the most critical bridges at Stonebridge Golf Course. Uh, we submitted or we accepted proposals and received proposals from three different companies. And the the pricing came back quite a bit higher than we expected, but we. Uh, the you know, the bridges aren't just access to the golf course and and really pretty, but they real they have all the irrigation and wiring in them for the irrigation system. And so if those bridges fail, we literally have no other way to access certain parts of the golf course. So the two bridges that we've chosen are Creekside One and Sunrise One, and those those are are the most critical as far as uh. Um, uh, the impact of a failure. And so um we're asking to have a professional services agreement. Approved for three hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars for those two bridges.
Any questions?
So will the design be similar to?
Uh, there they'll be uh steel and they'll have higher railings. Right now they have very, very small railings and they have a wood. Uh, surfacing and they'll be they'll be um. Their their steel and they have planks in them and they'll but the steel frame themselves will be um a lot more durable than what's there now. Should have a lot longer lifespan than what we have there now. They're mostly wood.
So what kind of a lifespan are we looking at?
Um, I think it's a twenty-five year warranty. On the bridge, on the actual like bridge itself, the planks excluded, but the the bridge itself has a really extensive warranty.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to our consent agenda. And these are our typical easements, deeds, appointments and reappointments to the Audit Review Committee. And Professional Standards Review Board. Did anybody have any questions or need clarification? Hey. Saying no questions, we'll go on to our communications and turn the time over to Mr. Johnson for our railroad crossing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, Dan Johnson, Public Works Director. So I have some things I could just speak generically about railroad crossings, but maybe I'll turn it to the council first and and uh. As if you have questions, obviously, there have been discussions about railroad crossings and the noise from the train horns and. And so if there are specific questions, maybe we start there and then I can just generically tell you what we what we know. This point.
So my one I get the most questions on is Anderson Development, so.
Sixtieth West.
And Forty-seventh, whatever.
Yeah.
So can we start with that one?
Yeah, just just train horns in general then and and noise from the train.
What we can do to.
Yeah, so. Great. Um, so the Federal Railroad Railroad Administration. Um, established rules regarding train horns and um anytime there's a a public at grade cross or any at grade crossing. Public or private on a with a with a railroad that's not like uh ETA, we don't have, they don't have the same train horn rules on the. The light rail because of the trap control systems that they've set up or whatever, but but these freight systems. Um, that run through the city um. Have the train horn rule, which says that, let's see, they have to sound their horn at least fifteen seconds and no more than twenty seconds in advance of all. At grade crossings. And so um but when they establish that rule that says you have to blow your horn, they also establish ways in which you could um. Make it so that the trains don't blow their horns. At least on every time they at least every time they pass through there. And so. Those are called quiet zones and the establishment of a quiet zone can be met if there are certain physical improvements on the grounds, that physical safety improvements. Um, such as lights and gates could be, they could either be quadrant gates, which are gates on all four legs of an intersection or. Uh, a single gate on either side with uh with uh. Raised islands, raised concrete islands. And so um. But you you gotta look.
Explain that one.
So it's um. The cons, the idea is that you um, well, it's just it's it's gates. Um, with with a a raised concrete median so that you can't go around the gates is basically all that is. And so but there's certain um things that. Basically, every every crossing that's in this quiet zone would have to have those certain safety improvements. And we have a a general idea of what we would need done on on all the crossings. We have ten at grade crossings. That are on the west side of the city between in that Forty-seventh to Forty-first and fifty-six to. Uh, seventy-two area um where the Bacchus and the Garfield lines pass through the city. So we have a general idea of what it would take and we have rough cost estimates, but we don't know in great detail. What exactly would need to be done. We've just recently completed improvements on the crossing at Forty-seventh South. And all those crossings, they're they're the that's the standard that would need to be. You know, that that's ready. We could certainly apply for a crossing in that area, but it's too close to other crossings um. That are not necessarily ready. And so a quiet zone, they can be established um in areas. I think that'd be a half a mile long. And so as you have crossings that are close to one another. They they all have to be kind of improved in tandem. And so. We've been working recently with uh Kern's Metro, well, it's Kern City now, I guess. Um. There's a federal grant available through the bipartisan bipartisan infrastructure law. It's called the Railroad Grant Elimination, or excuse me, the Railroad Crossing Elimination Grant Program. Um, and we don't intend to eliminate any railroad crossings, but this this grant can be used for. Safety improvements at crossings. And so. We've applied for funds. Only to do a study to actually determine what improvements would need to be done and built. Um. And at this point, we don't we don't know if if we'll receive that grant. And so that's just kind of our first flush effort to. To to really do a cooperative effort with our neighbors from Kearns and in Magna. Um, that would all benefit and really could potentially need to participate in the the quiet zone establishment process. So um, the bottom, well, not the bottom line, there's lots of bottom lines, but. But we know that, I mean, so. Many of the crossings that that are out there. Um, so I've got kind of a general. You know, the the so Forty-seventh and. The Forty-seventh or South Crossing is good. That one's done. Fifty-six hundred West. Uh, that one could be close. I think there's there's a handful that are. I think there's a some minor improvements that improvements that might need to be made to that one, but it's got islands. They might not be long enough on one side, but you know, again, we haven't really delved into it because we. Well, we that's what we're hoping to do with this potential study with with Kearns. Um, but you know, as you go down the line, there's some of those crossings have gates, have lights and gates and some don't. Um, and uh. You know, so. Um, we've 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 got. I look at sixty-four hundred West that the crossing that's on the 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 north end of sixty-four hundred West. Um, to make that, you know, we've we've discussed that one before. That one needs some serious roadway work. To kind of fix the big bump on the the north side of the railroad crossing. And so. And I guess just to give you a little bit of background, when we. Uh, so this recent uh work on forty-seven hundred South, the permitting process for that took about three years. So. It's just. Really complicated when you. When you're working through the railroad folks in Omaha, but. Um, I don't know. I've spoken a lot, but I don't know if you have any if I've added questions or if I've kind of can understand kind of where things stand.
So if we were to say, okay, let's see how much it would cost. So the one at six that on six thousand. How much would it be to put one in?
Hmm. Um. So generically, we we kind of have a rough estimate. If there's no lights and gates. You're probably in the half a million dollar range to add lights and gates. You know, all the rest of the roadway improvements are in good shape, then then lights and gates is about that much. Um, you know, there there may be. Situations where we have lights and gates, but we need to do a little bit of modification to the maybe to add islands or something like that. Um, so. You know, we've added it all up and we're we think we're somewhere in the. Five to seven million dollar range. Um, to do all the improvements at all the crossings to have. Uh, all quiet zones through our city.
And how many of our. Railway crossings have immediate residentials? Are there quite a few?
Um. Most of them do. Yeah, I mean, really, I think they. Maybe the well, no, they all do. They all have very close proximity to uh to residential.
The horn doesn't determine residential, it just blows and it's it's loud.
Yeah, and yeah, everywhere that lives along that railroad corridor is gonna hear it. Unless we can establish a quiet zone. So. We're hopeful that we'll get that we'll get this grant with with Kearns and and. But at this point, we're kind of, it's a federal grant and. Uh, approaching a new administration that may or may not have the same priorities. So we'll, I don't know. You know, we don't really have a lot of. Control, but we're hopeful that that we'll get something out of that.
So we're applying for grant money now. Can we apply for money to put in the. Quiet zones?
Yes, you can. And um, I mean, this grant may may still be around when we actually know what we need to build.
Um. So I was wondering if we need to speed up something to apply for the money sooner than later.
Um, I don't know that we could speed up anything to get the this particular. Money. I think we have to study first before we could go and ask for money for physical improvements. Um, the state always has some a little bit of money for. At grade crossing improvements that we could go for and it won't be enough to fund this, but really we'll be. If we wanted to accelerate it, you know, we our options include just local transportation money, um, a state appropriation or. Uh. Or that that state railroad crossing money. Or a federal grant of some sort.
Cause I'm just thinking, can we do the study without the federal grant? Is it's I'm assuming it'd be a lot lesser amount.
We certainly could, yes.
Speed that up and then apply for the. Two, five, seven million.
Yep.
Sooner.
Yeah.
Not be held up waiting.
We most definitely could, yeah. And and if the council's interested, we could certainly go down that road. We've talked to a couple of consultants and. Gotten a feel, we you know, we think we're in the fifty to seventy thousand dollar range to to study it. Um. And and have a real firm understanding of what really is we built with good estimates.
Yeah.
And it might not be that much, but that's. It's kind of.
I think our time would be better spent, but that's just my opinion. What is the rest of the council thinking?
Is that study something that Kearns or the jurisdictions around us would be interested in? Combining constantly.
We could have that conversation. I don't know. Yeah.
I mean, the seventy thousand is our portion or the total?
That would be really to study. I'm I'm estimating that that's what it would take to to study all of our ten crossings.
It's it's a. Area-wide problem. That's cracked down for the part of this year on our quiet zones.
Yes.
There's a lot of cities that used to have them that suddenly don't.
Yep, there were cities that have the front runner and that rep freight rail line that. That had quiet zones and they did an audit of the physical improvements on the ground and there were some. Shorted some deficiencies. And so they took away the quiet zone for the entire length through from Davis to Utah County.
So I would say let's try to get the study done as quick as possible. Go from there.
And apply for the big money.
Yeah, if you're interested, we can we can get a real number from a consultant and and really study it. That's something the councils.
And we also show our citizens what you aren't really thinking about.
Yeah, serious. Were there anybody opposed to doing it in that way?
I think it's a great way to approach it because we really don't have any control with this federal grant program that.
Yeah, I think we.
They're actually taking the lead on the the grant. So. Maybe we get our foot in the door with the grant people and we can even change things down the road if if we know more sooner.
What's the percentage of effect gonna give uh grant? Yes, hundred percent, fifty percent.
Uh, these these grant funds, I don't remember the match. I it it's no more than twenty-five percent uh that we would have to pay, but. But I don't recall the the managing funds. That were required on that grant.
Well, twenty-five percent is better than one hundred percent, so.
Sure, but you'll also have to do the federal things, the song and dance, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, turn the time over to Ms. Young for our off-leash dog park discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you may recall, we had a resident uh send an email that uh kind of requesting some off-leash uh dog parks in the city. Uh, it is, it is kind of uh interesting that we don't have off-leash dog parks in the city, but. There are a lot of benefits to having it. It kind of contains dog um waste and dog um activity. It really is valuable for uh residents and dogs to get out and socialize and uh get a little bit of exercise. There there are a lot of community benefits to. Um, to having the the dog parks. You know, it really is uh valuable to have smaller. Uh. Spread out dog parks than have one big dog park. Uh, because it's a lot more accessible for the residents. It's a lot easier for um people to. Um, access them easily from their neighborhood, whether they walk or uh or just a shorter drive to get there. And it it doesn't totally overtake any one space. Uh, we um, there's a lot of value for pet owners in having dog parks because they kind of um are encouraged more, even more so to be responsible pet owners and. Clean up after themselves and their dogs. And uh so so some of the things that we uh we've lot, we've looked at this a lot over the years and and certainly have. Um, have had a lot of discussions over the years about putting some in, but. The the majority of the cost associated with dog parks is fencing, um, certainly upkeep and landscaping. Having a few obstacles, having the kind of drinking fountains that have the dog bowl uh with them so that the dogs have access to water too. And you always want to have some shade. Uh, whether that's an area where we have existing trees or have some kind of shade structure and benches and things like that. So some of the. Um, areas that we um have have identified as um potential locations for dog parks. Um, we think City Park would be a a great location because of its proximity to the animal shelter. Of course, Hillsdale Park was the one uh from the resident who sent the email uh recommending a dog park at Hillsdale Park. Uh, the other place that makes a lot of sense is um. Uh, here at Fairborn Station because of the high density housing here and the lack of of yards available for people. So the cost to to have a a dog park, those drinking fountains are eight thousand dollars apiece. And so to have those put in, isn't that crazy? Uh, but the fencing and those, a couple of obstacles and a, you know, a few benches and things like that, depending on the size of the dog park, we think somewhere between thirty and sixty thousand dollars per dog park. We would love to to have some. We have some in plans for future. Um, park development, including phase two of the Westview ex- expansion. Um, there's a a trailhead on the Mountain View Corridor at. Uh, fifty-four hundred South, I believe, that we would that we would um consider putting a dog park as well in future developments. But we, you know, if if count, if that's something that council wants to. Um, approve funding for, we would love to to put some in and some of the existing parks that we have. We definitely would want to put them away from homes because of the noise and the potential smell. And so we would want to stay closer to streets and possibly businesses where it wouldn't be as much of an impact to to the residents. So we'd be we'd be happy to. Um, you know, put together some firm numbers, um, size, locations, drawings and and bring it to you, but we we expect somewhere between thirty and sixty thousand dollars per park, depending on the size of. Of the park that we put in. Generally, you have two sections where you can kind of rope off or. Lock a gate to one section so that that can kind of recover a little bit from the. From the pet waste and the use. And so you kind of alternate every other every couple of weeks so that um it's not totally overrun and and. And so you kind of alternate every other, every couple of weeks so that um it's not totally overrun and, and destroyed down to, to dirt. Although a lot of dog parks are just dirt because the, the grass gets pretty well destroyed with, with dogs on it all the time. But we would love to put some dog parks in if that's the, the desire of the council and uh we would love to, to consider that.
Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
So my phone now has AI and it's supposed to give me a summary of the meeting. So that's what I was testing. So sorry. Started a different recording. Somebody helping me with pronunciation. So, sorry about the all right, we'll now go to our council calendar. Was there any questions on the calendar or things that needed to be added? No? Hey, potential future agenda items.
Okay. Uh, just a quick reminder about the questions for the district or um position. If each of you would, I think I've gotten one from uh Will or in Whitestone. Um if each of you'd like to submit your question, I can get that together. Um, I would need it by the end of next week. Or if you're comfortable with the questions that we had, we can also do that, just whatever direction you guys would like.
First time I only, I was the only one that got the assignment.
Well, I was good with other questions. So did you figure out whose was who so that I didn't know?
No, we didn't have.
So yeah, we can submit new ones.
Response back saying
We're good with the question.
Question. You might want to update them or something like that.
I'm happy to do that as well. If the council was comfortable with what we had, I can just kind of revamp it.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. I will do that and send that to you guys.
Want to talk about the timing or is that maybe a future discussion?
Oh yeah, um I sent out an email earlier this week um with an updated timeline. The Councilman Patisimano's um official date of resignation would be December thirty first, which just kind of moved things up about a week. Um, so we're looking at packet pickup from December ninth to December thirty first. Um, in-person filing would be from January sixth to January tenth. Then we'd have the study meeting on January fourteenth and that's actually a, we already have a, a meeting scheduled that day, so we won't have to do a special meeting. Um, and then we've got the interview meeting scheduled for January twenty eighth and we can just do that at our regular six thirty meeting that day as well. We plan to not have agenda item, items on there um unless, unless absolutely needed.
So the study meeting on the fourteenth would be just to go over any questions because we'd have the packet
Right.
Without their answers and such.
I'll have a binder available for each of you um that day. So it's basically just distributing that and then I can help answer any questions about the process um during that meeting as well.
I threw out a suggestion on the question part. Um, just as a recent participant in this process, the introduction was short, but and the individual questions that we had during the public interview process were we had way too much time, so I made a suggestion to maybe add a minute or two onto your introduction. And then maybe a minute to answer council questions during the interview process, but just a suggestion and how the council would feel about that.
Like I have a problem. I mean, having it from the other side, the applicant side, I think that's good inputs. Thank you.
I support those suggestions. Someone never likes to make a long answer anyway.
So we're looking at like a three minute introduction, two questions, one minute each, so five minutes per candidate. Is that, is everyone comfortable with that?
Yeah, and would each person, would a council member be assigned to who they were going to ask the questions? So, would it be just random?
Uh, last time what we did is uh I asked the question.
Okay.
Um, just so, and I think the reasoning uh that the council had decided that last time was um just so it doesn't come from different people, maybe phrasing it differently or saying things differently or
That's right, it's the same two questions.
Yeah, same two question, same, same um person asking the question. So there's no room for, that's not fair.
I forgot that's how we do.
Yes, but I'm happy to adjust that however you guys would like, so.
I remember why we did that. So thank you. That's perfect.
Um, and we'll determine those two questions um probably later in the month. I'll send out maybe like a survey. You guys can vote on which ones you would like to ask or however you're comfortable.
Were the questions hard enough last time?
Oh, it's much easier to be on this side of the table.
I was asking if the questions harder or were they fine?
They were fine. The future fit in fifty years was, I mean, a lot of the quest responses were flying cars.
Yeah.
I did not say that, but um, I think they were.
Well, he's enough now.
Yeah.
If any of you have a suggested question for the interview, I'm happy to, to share that with everyone if you want to send it to me.
Okay.
But we have plenty of time on, on those, so.
Well, we will miss you after December thirty first, Jake. Hopefully you'll come back and, you know, be an audience member quite a bit.
Nowhere to find.
Yeah. Hey, any other questions concerning the appointments? Hey, any potential future agenda items? Okay, seeing none. We'll go to council reports.
Junior Achievement asked us to send somebody to help each class of Valley Crest Elementary. So I accepted the assignment. Since I have been assistant principal there a couple of years. I realized about halfway through the class why I retired. I guess when you have a kindergarten class and they have two full-time behavioral aides assigned to the class, you should start thinking a little differently. It was a fun time though. We got the lesson across. Two volunteers from Junior Achievement in there with me and the two aides and the teacher. And it was a twenty-five person class, but I think it also spoke four languages. And I remember when I was at Valley Crest, uh, we actually had fourteen languages spoken at home. So it was, and it was one of my first schools I was at. So it was a while back. So, but it was fun. Uh, I've politely declined any future ones. Especially to the poor volunteers that were with me because they didn't know what they were getting into either. They've been in several before and this was the hardest one we've had, but but it was an interesting uh curriculum and teaching kindergartners about money and save it, things of that nature. So that was a, a good program and one we might want to participate in in the future. So other than that, I just attended things like everybody else attended, like the Dowdell Puzzle and how many did we sell that opening night?
Uh, opening night, we sold around two hundred sessions. We sold another seven, five, one hundred over the past season.
I got a veiled question on an email from one of my kids in Texas. He said, I saw this beautiful puzzle. Should I buy one now or wait until after Christmas? My wife said, well, I don't know what you're talking about, but you might want to wait. So so it uh, it was exciting to be there. I, I
That was good.
People were said get that excited on the symphony concerts and other concerts we have this, the next month, so.
I know Councilman Christensen um spoke to a local scout group a week or so ago. I don't know that because I spoke to the Cub Scouts right before them. And talking about dealing with young, young people, yeah, I'm, I'm my kids are older now. I'm not used to eight, nine year olds and, and how uh quickly squirrel. Oh, this is fun though. I couldn't even say squirrel. Yeah, it was a school. Good time to talk about government and elections. It was actually on election night.
Yes.
Oh, nice.
They were, they were really into it.
My scout master told me we're talking about the local government. You'll probably get some questions about the other, but it's the local government. Stay out of trouble.
So I, I attended the Putzall Grand Open, Putzall Court. They had um Nick Romondo and another player, I don't remember. Attend school, they, the courts looked nice. They have Eben Connor. Designs. That was great. And then, well, we attended the LPC with the league. I did, I forgot my notes. I don't know if you remember.
No, they just want to control everything.
Yeah.
Good luck to us.
Who wants to control everything?
The legislature.
Oh.
So hopefully somebody remembers how municipalities like we left alone.
Along that line, yesterday, um, the mayor and city hosted a really great uh luncheon with uh newly elected officials as well as incumbents and current folks and some that um are moving out of uh state office in our area. And uh, yeah, I, the hospitality here, uh as always, is always top notch. The birria tacos were a nice touch as well, but yeah, I heard some really great comments from other folks who had attended that uh, it was a very genuine uh very gracious gesture and hopefully uh preview of good relations going forward in, in this dynamic of municipal, state wildness.
Yep, thank you.
We also uh put another activity in the Maverick Center. Solid City Stars, Rip City Remix. Basketball game. And about five hundred other people. It doesn't pull the crowd that the hockey pulls. But it had a good crowd there. They were excited. They participated well. I've got a couple of, we had West Valley Night uh Saturday night. I got a couple of emails from uh neighbors saying they, they said they tried their kids in public taking them to the basketball game and I haven't talked to them. I, I know how they behave in another area that we're in every week. They are growing up, so they are behaving a little bit better, but it uh, they said they had a fun time at the games. When we can keep pushing.
So I think I had something I relayed night last week, so I can't remember them all, but the Friendsgiving, I know. Friendsgiving was really nice at the cultural center. They did a really good job. The kids run it themselves pretty much and it was really nice. The MC was really good and they gave out good award or little prizes, raffle, different things, and the food was really good. So if anybody can attend that next year, it's awesome. Today, I went to Hunter Elementary. Uh, their PTA did a fundraiser and the cereal box domino trick through the halls and into the auditorium. They had great support from our local businesses, donate. Crime trucking was one I remember, but they had twelve or more businesses within the city that really helped out. And I did a one question and answer with the third graders. They were spectacular. I don't know what you guys are complaining about.
Yeah.
But they were very well mannered and had great questions. So uh, they're doing a great job out there.
Daughter was super excited to see. She came home. It's the first thing she said.
Yeah, they were really good, very respectful. So the little school out there.
There was another one out there.
Um, we need a closed session for disposition of real property. Somebody would like to make that motion and then we'll adjourn right after that with nothing else being discussed.
So moved.
Hey, Ms. Kamic.
Uh, Councilman Patisimano.
Hi.
Councilman Whitstone, Councilman Harmon, Councilman Hune. Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld.
Yes.
And Mayor Link.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, let's take a five minute break and then begin then.